The legislature is back in session. And the second reading file, Bill number 322-33, the chair recognizes Senator Tom Adda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 322-33COR as amended by the sponsor to place it in third reading, and I'd like to speak on it.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, right now being passed around is an aerial map of the lot that's being proposed to be rezoned. Now, I want to make it very clear that I personally have very strong reservations about rezoning through the legislature. That's why we have the Guam Land Use Commission to do that. But in this case, I certainly was more than happy to introduce and support legislation to rezone this property. Now, this property we're talking about is property that was purchased by the Guam Academy Charter School because they basically, their lease at Tejon is going to be up by next year. So they have purchased this property, and they're going to be constructing a school to be able to support their educational endeavors up there. To make that possible, they have put in paperwork to seek, pursue federal grants that are available to be able to fund this construction. But one of the things that they need to have is that they've got to show that they have site control of the location where the school is to be built. And so, one of the ways that they did that is, of course, by purchasing this private property in Radio Baragota, just off of Route 15, across from the GPA headquarters. Now, with this particular endeavor, in their plans and in the funding grant that they are pursuing is to build an access road from Route 15 into where the lot is. So, in what was passed around, you will see outlined there in green, a line that connects with Route 15 on your southeast part of that graphic. And that's where the beginning of this road that they will build to get access into their property. And it meanders to the northeast, up north, and then hangs to the west there, onto the property. Now, I was very supportive of this rezoning request because in that it's going to be a win-win situation. It's a win-win situation for the school because then now they can get access into the property. But it's also going to be a win-win situation for the landowners around there. The landowners around there are, actually, these properties were recently returned by the military, but the people have, you know, they just can't get access into it. They need a road. So by constructing this road in there, it's going to open up the area for development. You'll have access to the properties that's in there. GPA and GWA are already looking at the area to see how they can bring in their infrastructure to service the schools. And so, all around, it's going to be a win-win situation. And so, because of this type of scenario, I was certainly very happy to have introduced this bill to rezone the lot 2260 and 2261 in the municipality of Baragota. And so, the rezoning is to rezone the property from agriculture to S1 or a school zone. So that, Madam Speaker, is basically the gist of Bill 322. Now, just one other thing is that we did put in there, Section 3, that, of course, you know, sometimes there's the tendency to say, "Okay, okay, we'll agree to do all this and all that." And the bottom line is, and Section 3 says, "You can go ahead and construct, but if that road doesn't get built, the DPW will not issue a occupancy permit." So that becomes an incentive to ensure, or safeguard, to ensure that, in fact, the road is built as was agreed on. Thank you.
On the motion, Senator Underwood.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 322-33. And the author of the bill, I certainly am very grateful that he had entertained the request and is moving forward with, hopefully, providing them the opportunity to actually build a school there by rezoning this area. But I wanted to speak about this because I think you and I know very much how Guahan Academy had struggled initially. And this effort that they are making where they are now willing and are able to purchase a property and get off our, you know, the Tejon lease and government assistance so that they can expand their program is really a testament and their commitment to our students and commitment to the concept of the charter school. And so, Madam Speaker, I just want to not only express my gratitude to the author of the bill, but I also want to commend Guahan Academy for their independence and the sense of empowerment. They sought out, just as we had been asking them for years, to look for some federal assistance, application for funds that would help them carry out their mission. And this, to me, really is, again, a testament and their commitment to our students, and I just want to congratulate them. So, I really am asking my colleagues to support this bill so that, hopefully, in a couple of years, we can visit a school that is far more expanded than where they are at right now at Tejon and continue to observe the development and the success of our students. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Rispio, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also rise in full support of this bill. I rise to recognize and commend our oversight chair over land, to say that this kind of legislative spot rezoning is a smart way to spot zone certain areas where the legislature needs to step in and provide for these kinds of rezonings so that the process, in this case, to construct a school, can continue. When I first had a conversation with Mr. Vince Leonguero about this issue, and he was already in communication with Senator Adda's office, he excitedly shared with me, Madam Speaker, and colleagues how they want to provide for the infrastructure, they want to provide for the access road, that the surrounding neighbors are going to be so happy with this kind of development because every time you have a school in a neighborhood, the value, the property values go up. The people may migrate to that area because there's a school in that area. Same can be said whenever the government places a fire station, a police station, you know, or some kind of development, the property values increase. And so, in my conversation with Vince Leonguero, I asked him, "Well, when you meet with Senator Adda, why don't you recommend that you provide those reversionary clauses that if you don't move forward with the construction of that road, then this rezoning will not go forward?" And he was so confident, Madam Speaker and colleagues, so he said that was a great idea. And I rise to commend Senator Adda and to thank him for placing in Section 3 of this bill that very same thing that says that the issuance of a partial or full occupancy permits for the permanent school campus or parts thereof shall be contingent upon the completion of construction of the local road access road by the Guahan Academy on established rights of way, easement, and compliance with all permit requirements for construction. So, this is a really smart spot zoning through this legislative process. So I rise in full support of it.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion?
Madam Speaker, you recognize, and then Senator Tino Munyvines.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, yes, like the author of this bill, you know, we've been very cautious about rezoning. And I know that word is out, is that be careful because the vice speaker normally, or the speaker herself does not normally support, you know, rezoning because we have a process. But I feel the same way as the chairman of the committee. If there's anyone, I guess, has been really very hard on Guahan Academy, has been, you know, myself, some years ago, and primarily because, you know, I'm, you know, the author of that legislation, the charter legislation, and just really wanting to make sure that everything runs according to law. And everyone in the legislature realized that at that time when we had an oversight hearing, to the point where it was so bad that the legislature was actually willing to and ready to repeal the legislation if changes were not being made. Fortunately, and I have to say that with the new board members, things have really changed. They've taken to heart the mandate of the law. They've taken to heart, in terms of what their mission is, and, you know, started to make all the changes. They have proven themselves to be stable with their finances, living within their means. And that was the bill of contention at the very beginning, was that we know that there are millions of dollars out there to support, grant monies to be able to support and sustain charter schools. But they needed to prove themselves. They need a two-year window to prove, you know, being stable and being chartered again to renew their charter. And they have proven that, and the members themselves are very conscientious of that fact. And now, with the fact that they have moved forward towards this purchase to get their own facility, that then they would no longer be riding on, you know, the government in terms of facility. It's still a public school system, so definitely it would still be supported by the government. But there, like I said earlier, there are millions of dollars in grants that are available to build their facility, to be able to, now in this case, also to provide roads that would definitely give access, not just to the school, but to the entire community who are all alongside that road. So, we, I, we, that the committee will continue, and with Senator Underwood and yourself, of course, with the funding, that we'll continue to, you know, to work with them, monitor them to make sure that, you know, they do account for the monies that are given to them, and that they are also then fulfilling the mission and the objectives of the mandate. So I definitely support this bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Senator Munyvines.
As you do, Ms. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I too want to take this time to stand up and rise and support this measure, Bill 322-33COR. And as the retiring speaker spoke about this support and the collaboration of working with all the board members of the charter school, I also want to add to that, Madam Speaker, now that the board members of this Guahan Academy Charter School also took the time to work with all the mayors within the surrounding neighborhoods and collaborated with them. And the mayors all came in support, from Baragota to Jigo. And I just want to say, it's very important that the engagement with the parents, with the members, the charter members of this Guahan Academy, but more importantly, with the students, the vision that they have to enhance on the institution. You know, Madam Speaker, that they have direct instructions as their core study, but even more importantly, is they see a vision of making sure that these students, that their students continue to be healthy, and they also vision to build upon and even work on, even working on having their gyms and their programs enhanced. So I just want to say that I stand in full support of this measure and thank the good author from Mingila for making this happen and working closely with all the stakeholders involved, including the parents, the students, the charter members, and of course, the mayors. Senator Masi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? There being none, Senator Adda, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So in closing, I just want to, first of all, clarify that the route that the school is going to build as part of their overall construction, that road actually had been identified by the Department of Land Management prior to the turnover of these properties, to the area, to the private property owners. So that road is actually, has already been surveyed and, you know, and it's on the map that that is for a road into that area. The second thing is that I would like to make a real simple floor amendment. In writing up this bill, we've tried to do it so that it mirrors the rezoning process that it would otherwise have gone through as required by law. And the bill, of course, we worked collaboratively with the Department of Land Management, and they came down at the public hearing, both Land Management and the Guam Land Use Commission were supportive of the bill. So there's no pushback on their part there. They were fine with this legislative rezoning. But the last, I would like to just make a simple amendment, and that is to add a new section that will be entitled Waiver of Agricultural Impact Statement. So, one of the requirements in rezoning is normally you would have the Application Review Committee, which is comprised of GWA, GPA, the GIPA, and all the other agencies here to take a look at what an impact a rezoning might have. Everybody provided comments, except for Department of Agriculture. And their findings was actually then submitted in what is called a Land Zoning Consideration Report. So that is being put into the committee report as part of that report. What we do not have is an agricultural impact statement from the Department of Agriculture, although they were given the opportunity to comment on this particular rezoning. So the amendment I would like to make is simply to add a new section entitled Waiver of Agricultural Impact Statement. Section 61637 of Title 21 GCA relative to agricultural impact statements shall not apply to this act. And that just kind of, you know, ensures that all our i's are dotted and t's crossed. So that's that simple amendment that I would like to make, Madam Speaker.
Amendment, no objections, so ordered.
And, okay, so then the final comment I would like to make, Madam Speaker, is I would like to move that you be placed as the second co-sponsor, recognizing the fact, of course, that you were the pioneer of the charter schools. And, of course, Senator Roy Rispio did work closely with me, and it was actually with his guidance that suggested that, you know, the check and balance to ensure that, in fact, the road gets put in. And I would like to make him be the third co-sponsor on the bill.
On that amendment, no objections, so ordered. And the motion to send then 322-33, the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. We're going to take a brief recess. Yes, 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 that's why I'm waiting for you, Senator, for a motion. Senator Rispio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that notwithstanding the House rules that we revert back to motions.
No objections, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the veto of Magatlahe in Guahan on Bill 2-33, I'd ask that, at this point, we address the, an override of that veto.
On that motion, no objection, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think all of you have suffered me the last two weekends, sending you five-page Dear Colleague Letters, trying to hopefully get your support in this override. And I did so because, not that it's going to serve me any purpose, I'm not part of the D.C. plan, and I am not going to benefit from this. As you know, I'm not married, so I have no spouse that's going to benefit from it, unfortunately. And I have no immediate family that I know is going to benefit from this. So, I am doing this for 8,000 government employees who, at the current time, are in the D.C. plan and stand to retire in the next couple of years or in the next couple of months. And some of them, unfortunately, retired over the last several years under the D.C. plan and are now destitute. I don't know if you received any visits, Madam Speaker, but I've received visits of people who wanted me to amend Bill 2, to please include those who had retired over the last couple of years, to be allowed to come back into government service and to be able to go into the D.C. plan. I mean, into the 1.7 hybrid, DB. Because when they retired, they had 80, 90, some of them maybe had 100,000. They paid off their home and then had no money, paid off their loans, and now have They didn't, they don't have, they didn't have enough, and they don't have enough in money to be able to live in dignity in their retirement after they've given this government 20, 30, 35 years of service. That is unconscionable, Madam Speaker. And so today, I ask my colleagues to please join me in the override. This bill, number 2, has to be the most researched, the most discussed piece of legislation ever passed by the Guam Legislature. I don't take credit for its creation. A dear colleague of ours started this effort 10 years ago after he and the public auditor realized that there was a crisis within the retirement system on Guam in that the D.C. members would be retiring with virtually nothing in their accounts to be able to carry them through more than two or three years of their retirement. Thankfully, he was not dissuaded by as difficult as this task was going to be. And for almost 10 years, he labored with the retirement fund. Senator Ben and the retirement fund went through almost a dozen, one dozen, iterations of the bill before the retirement fund was satisfied with the bill and was able to submit it and say they would be able to support it. Madam Speaker, we have to remember the retirement fund is also the only government board with a fiduciary responsibility, meaning they are personally liable for anything that they do that might harm the retirement fund. And so, they cannot and will not support any legislation that they believe would undermine the financial viability of the retirement fund. So with Senator Ben, they went through 12 iterations, writing, rewriting, sending it back and forth, until this plan came up. Initially, they called it the hybrid because it had a DB component and a D.C. component. But in actual fact, the D.C. component is so small that finally I decided to just rename it the 1.75. And that's because, Madam Speaker, it is. It's a DB plan, and I admit it straight up, it's a DB plan. But it's not a DB plan that's going to kill the government of Guam. All the actuaries, including the one that we just got the other day from the administration, says that $1.3 billion deficit that the retirement fund currently is born with, 85% of that is because of the old DB plan. And so, 20 years ago, the legislators at that time, seeing how much money that was costing, cut it off. At that time, it was the reasonable thing to do for a legislature, to stop that very, very expensive and lucrative plan. But the D.C. plan that they put in place after it had too many variables, including what could happen in the stock market, or if people even involved themselves with their D.C. plan, and understood what they were doing in the stock market. And there have been several drops in the stock market, recessions in 2000, in 2008 and '09, that 2008 and '09, that the country is still trying to recover from. And many people in their, in their D.C. plans lost more than half of their, the savings that they thought that they had in there. Some people knew how to be able to invest, and invested well, and they're doing very well with their D.C. plan. Unfortunately, not many of us were trained to be able to do that. And not many of the Guam employees, that we ask our people to go off to become great teachers, and great nurses, and, and great government officials, but we didn't ask them to go off and also take additional classes on how to be able to handle a retirement fund in a 401K, or how to be able to work the stock market so they can, they can make money on, with their, with their money, their savings. And so they lost. And so Senator Benn and the retirement fund worked diligently for eight years, and got something that was finally introduced in the legislature, in the, in the 32nd Guam Legislature first. No, I guess, no, it was the 31st. Bills, the hearings were held, unfortunately, that legislature went sin to die. It was reintroduced again in the 32nd Guam Legislature, and we had several hearings, many hearings, after I took over as, as Finance Chair, and tried to carry the banner after Senator Benn. And we had all kinds of hearings on it, unfortunately, we weren't able to finish. It, it was a long process. Again, I reintroduced it at the beginning of this Guam Legislature, that's why it's Bill number 2. Bill number 2. It was introduced on the first day. And over this legislative session, I've had 10, 10 roundtables, 10 hearings, to discuss every possible issue that this could have. The retirement fund was there with me at every hearing, every, every roundtable. Initially, the administration was also on board. The Director of Administration at the time ran to be, for the retirement board, and was elected as the D.C. representative on the retirement board, that was the late Senator Tony Blosz. He worked on this bill for many years. Before I had a hearing last year, he sent out a memo to all the HR departments in the, in the government of Guam, asking them to get their employees to come down to this legislature to support the passage of Bill 2, because he believed that it was an excellent bill that would be able to take care of the D.C. employees, and make sure that they didn't retire into destitution, and into the welfare rolls. Unfortunately, after that email got out, his chain was yanked, and he was no longer allowed to come to the hearings, and to the meetings, and the administration stopped They stopped participating until the new Director, I instructed to show up, and we've had to go through all of, everything with her. We've been very upfront, Madam Speaker, when I walked all of you through in my office, I've admitted, the same way the PTA, the actuary that the Department of Administration hired, I was upfront with you guys that, yes, if, if 100% of all the D.C. employees moved to the, to the 1.75, the government of Guam could be on the hook for an additional 143 to 173 million dollars in an increased unfunded liability. Yes. There was never any secret about that. But we also tried, in, in Mr. Wright's analysis, that, that all of you had, he broke down, if 100%, it's going to be 143 million, if it's 80%, it's going to be a certain amount, if it's 60%, if it's 50%, this is how much it's going to cost. But he gave us various scenarios, because he knew that he couldn't, he couldn't predict how many people were going to come over to the new plan. But he wanted us to be informed that this could be the potential liability. So, yes, I admit, there was never, I wouldn't, contrary to statements made by the Director of Administration, I never lied about the fact that there was going to be an increase in the unfunded liability. Anybody who knows how to read would know that it was in every single actuarial analysis that Mr. Wright provided. So I wasn't, nobody, there was no hiding it. What nobody talked about is, if 100% of those, the employees come over, we also get a half a billion dollars' worth of their assets that are going to be covered, transferred over into the retirement fund. That would be available for investments. That part of the equation somehow gets ignored. The way this works is, for each one of you that are D.C. employees, if and when, and I hope this bill passes, you will be sat down, and they will tell you, you've had 20 years of service, and your average three years was X dollars. In order to come over, you will need to have 80, 80, $80,000 to transfer into the new 130,000 to get into the new plan. If you're one of the smart ones, and you have 260,000 in your fund, only 130,000 will be transferred over, and 130,000 will be left for you to continue to handle as, as a D.C. If you were one of the unfortunate ones who didn't know how to play the market, and you only had 100,000, then yes, the government of Guam, in this, would have to, to pay, pay that 30,000 to, to ante you into the, into the, cover you into the game. We were very clear. I walked every single one of you through it in my office, answering all your questions. I was very upfront about that. But this took years, and years, of work. I know there's been a request to delay it 30 days, and we'll come up with a solution. They've been searching for a solution for 21 years. They've been working diligently on a, a solution for the last 10. There is no way a solution's going to be made and found in the next 36, 90 days. It took 90 months to get to where we're at. It's not going to take 90, there's no way it can be addressed in 90 days. This is the best plan possible. The concern that they have about the unfunded liability, we had a hearing, a roundtable And the concern that the government has right now about the fact that it may, and I put air quotes around the word "may," it may affect our credit rating, is suspect. We had a roundtable, and their advisor, who's copied on every single one of the emails I got, was at the hearing. He said, "An extension of the amortization period will not be deemed negatively, received negatively by the bond market, if we continue to pay down the debt," I mean, the unfunded liability. And we have. Every single year, in every budget, we put 27% aside to pay down that unfunded liability. The advisor that was here said, "A one, two-year, three-year, even five-year extension of the amortization period would not be deemed negative." The important thing is that you continue to make your yearly payments to pay down the debt. That's what's important for the credit rating. That's what's important for all of our credit ratings. We may have a huge credit card bill, or huge mortgages, but as long as we're on time, and we make our payments every year, every month, on a timely basis, our credit rating is, is safe. And the bond market isn't going to jump and say, review it negatively. If it was going to review negatively affect anything, our last foray into the bond market with, to pay for operational costs of the hospitals, I thought for sure was going to result in a negative rating. It didn't. So all these boogeymen keep jumping up, and I think I've addressed it in both of the letters that I've sent to all of you. But time is running short. In 90 days, we go sin to die. Then this bill will have to be reintroduced as 1-34, by whoever's in the next legislature. And I'm sure you've received calls, and you've received the email the other day from that one employee that talked about, one of his friends, who retired a couple of years ago on his D.C. plan, and now has no money, and is trying to work, and he, as he puts it in his advanced age. Madam Speaker, you and I may enjoy our work, and might be working past what the retirement age is on the, on the bill, but we love our job. Some people want to do other things in their retirement. Some people don't love their job as much as we do, and don't want to work past 62. Or can't. But if they do, they have to have a dignified retirement, where they don't have to become what happens in the States, working at Walmarts, or working here at McDonald's, rather than sitting in the front with, with all the retirees that are discussing what's happening in government, they're going to be schlepping hamburgers in the back. There's 8,000 employees that could possibly be affected by this. 8,000. 8,000 employees and 8,000 families. And I beg all of you, not for me, but for those 8,000 families, to please override this veto. Because the retirement fund has done its due diligence, it has worked through the eight or 10 different, 12 different reiterations that Senator Benn sent them, and finally found something that they could comfortably hang their hat on, and say, "This we support." I'm sure many of us, and I know many people have been pushing at all the hearings, you hear it from Judge Brudalio, you hear it from some of the others, "Why can't it be 2.0, why can't it be 2.25? We can't afford it. I'm as pained by that decision as, as you are, as they are. But this is all that we can afford. It's not the Cadillac. It's not even a Camry. It's a little Corolla. But it is able to get them through, and move them in dignified way through their retirement The concerns that they had about a DB plan without a cap, and all, and all the millions that are going to be, be added on because we have another DB plan, we've addressed. Senator Siniklas introduced, and got included in the bill, a retirement security plan that we're going, that people can, that employees after 2018 will be put into, in the hopes that at some point in the future, they'll get Social Security. Madam Speaker, let me just, and I know I use the example a number of times in, in the, in, in my letters to, to all of you. Right now, if someone has 50,000, or even, even give them 100,000 in their retirement The example that the PTA actuary makes mention, initially, I, I, I almost choked initially about where, "Well, the, this, this plan is not as good as the old DB plan." Of course it's not. We can't afford that. And it's not going to give them that much money. I'm embarrassed by that, but it's true. I'm embarrassed by that, but it's true. But using an example of, they use the example of the employee that's making $43,000 and when they retire under this plan, they'll be getting $1,200 or $1,300 a month. Yes, $1,200 or $1,300 a month, or about $13,000 a year. I mean, $113,000, $100, about $115,000 a year. Times 20 years, they'll receive $300,000 in benefits. Then if they, if they're survivor, they have a survivor, their survivor will get half of that. Will get $7,500 a year. But under the current system, $100,000, and that's it. If they live frugally on $15,000 a year, six years, and then they're done. This provides a floor, something. It pains me that I can't do the 2.25 to match the DB that many of us are, have. And the embarrassing thing is that your children will retire with less than you do. But it is a dignified floor. And if we do nothing now, and we have to start the process all over with the retirement And our children will be retiring with nothing. Madam Speaker, it's imperative that today that this legislature stands up for 8,000 government employees who have devoted years and years of service to this government, who were asked to provide service to this government in whatever field they were in, nurses, teachers, accountants, but didn't have the wherewithal to have the financial wizardry to be able to make their DC plan work for them. And to give them a chance at a decent retirement. So I'm asking my colleagues to please join me in overriding the governor's veto. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Sniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I apologize, I'm a little under the weather. The retiring speaker and the work that he has put into this effort has been quite a sight to behold. Because it is completely altruistic on his part. This is of no benefit to him. He takes so much criticism and a lot of, just a lot of flak for just trying to move forward something that is an actual imperative in our community. And it's an imperative because we need to put this unfunded liability into context. The opposition or those who would suggest that we do not override this veto constantly bring up that this will add, they use the words "add," over $100 million in unfunded liability. But the reality, Madam Speaker, is that we're not adding that unfunded liability. That unfunded liability already exists in every single employee who has that shortfall attached to their career. What we're doing is we're implementing a solution so that unfunded liability actually gets funded. If we don't do anything, 8,000 employees will share a burden of 100-plus million dollars in retirement shortfall, and that burden will result in one of two things. Either they retire and they run out of money, and then the taxpayer has to subsidize them as indigents in health care and food stamps and housing. Or two, they do not retire. And imagine what that would cause in terms of the backstoppage in the flowing through of the workforce. We will have 80-year-old police officers, 80-year-old teachers, 80-year-old doctors. Don't get me wrong, 80-year-olds can do a lot of things. But in the case of moving forward our government and making sure that we're bringing through a whole new class of workers who are going to be able to continue to work, we need to allow people to retire. Those are the only two possible outcomes if we do not address this existing liability. Now, we need to clarify, Madam Speaker, why the liability is so much. It's not because we're trying to roll out some gold-plated plan for the very lucky Guan worker. On the contrary, the defined benefit plan that was in existence prior to this has a $1 billion unfunded liability for the entire Guan workforce over those years. For the entire Guan workforce since the last 20 years, this is only going to be 100 million. So, I mean, just raw math, you can say that this is 1/10th as sweet as what we've used to offer, but it's still necessary in order to provide a floor benefit. Now, when it comes to providing this retirement, and we evaluate why the amount got so high, we need to remember that this is a 20-year-old problem. If we had addressed this 20 years ago, it wouldn't be 100-plus million dollars. It'd be $10 million, maybe even less. 15 years ago, it probably would have been 20 or 30 million dollars. Every single year that we wait, this problem actually compounds and gets bigger as a multiple of what the previous shortfall was. Because in order to pay off and retire this unfunded cost, we need two things. We need money and we need time. We need money in the accounts and time for that money to grow. And the longer we wait, the less time we have, the less compounded growth we will be able to achieve on that money, the bigger this liability becomes. These are the financial realities of the status quo. Now, when we initiated this process, I did have a couple of concerns. The first was that if we were to just move forward the original bill, we would be leaving the potential for market fluctuations to create liabilities going forward perpetuitously. But in working with the author of the bill, we've been able to craft out a new component of this plan that would contain that for the most part. My second concern was I wanted to kind of move us towards social security. And as our Congresswoman continues to advance that cause in DC, we do include a provision in this bill that would automatically move us into that plan once the feds make it available for us on the terms that we're seeking. So this is a good plan. I've worked with the Vice Speaker on this for almost the last two years. My professional background prior to coming into the legislature was as a licensed financial advisor. Just to be clear, Madam Speaker, not a single person commenting on this from the administration has ever been licensed as a financial advisor. Not licensed. And yet they want to offer all the solutions and all the criticisms. I did this as a profession. And I'm telling the body now that this is the best that we can do. And while the numbers aren't ideal, they are what they are because we've taken so long and the problem has compounded and it's not going to go away. So if we wait longer, the problem compounds larger. And we will continue to have DC plan members retire without any safety net. And one of those two outcomes will be their downfall. They'll either run out of money, or they will just never be able to retire. So we need to override this veto. This is an imperative for this community. So I urge my colleagues to please vote yes on this override. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anybody else who would like to speak? Is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion, notwithstanding, of course, the governor's veto of Bill Number Two? There being none, Mr. Vice Speaker, you want to close? On the motion then to send it to the voting file, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahe and Guahan, I'd like to make a motion to put before the body a vote to override veto Bill Number 204-33 and to be afforded an opportunity to speak briefly.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, veto Bill 204-33, in a nutshell, is a bill that was introduced and vetoed to appeal the raises that were given out for elected and appointed officials. This is my first time moving forward this override. Because when the bill was first vetoed, there was a lot of belief that the finances of the government were sound and that the pay raises were deserved for all of the financial problems being fixed, and that the $2 million that we would save in repealing these raises were relatively inconsequential. So I waited because I know what the numbers are, and the numbers will speak for themselves over time. And I believe that we've come to that juncture where it is very clear what the numbers reflect. And it is no clearer than in the budget that we just recently had lapsed into law. Our Guan Police Department, as an example, has $5 million, received $5 million less than what they asked for. This $2 million will give them 50% more, or 50% of what they were requesting. Education, health, almost every single critical agency under the education, health, and public safety umbrella asked for more, and we didn't have it. In the meantime, over these past nine months or so, we've seen our people wait for tax refunds, we've had to borrow on the bond market and pay interest on those bonds in order to make up for operational shortballs at a hospital. We have, on numerous occasions, stared in the face of the financial realities of this government. So we can no longer, we can no longer cling to the justification that was sent down by the Lieutenant Governor saying that the finances are fixed, or the justification he sent down saying that these are deserved because our financial problems have all been solved. The numbers have spoken for themselves. And so if that basis is no longer valid, then neither are these raises. And there's just another component part to it, Madam Speaker, and that is that it's highly symbolic. It's highly symbolic, not only of this body, but it's highly symbolic of this government. And I'd just like to make a simple comparison. If you have a business that's struggling to get by, so many divisions within that business need more budget in order to be able to accomplish the goals of the company, but they constantly get denied because the company doesn't have any more money, and yet all the executives and the division heads get pay raises, exponential pay raises, 25% increases in their pay, what does that signal to the entire company, to the workers? It tells them that the tools for their job are not as important as the pockets of those who manage them. It undermines the morale of the operation. And it makes people say, "Well, if the boss is too worried about taking the money from the company, why am I going to be worried about accomplishing this company's mission? I should just kind of ride it out myself." If a company were to do that and be cited by their auditors for having certain subdivisions or junior companies that were being cited as a going concern by their auditors, as we are cited by our auditor for the Guan Memorial Hospital, if a company did that, their shareholders would revolt. They'd be calling for a vote to remove the CEO. The stock would tank in the market. Because it doesn't make any sense to be giving out large raises for management when you have divisions within the company that are a going concern. Any more than it makes sense to be giving out large raises for management when divisions within the company aren't receiving the budget allotments they are requesting in order to be able to accomplish their missions. It's no different here in this government, Madam Speaker. Now, I've heard on many occasions, people saying that government should not run like a business. And on the surface, that kind of makes sense because, yeah, you know, businesses are out to make money, government, I guess, is not to make money. But when you actually step back and you compare apples to apples, every business has divisions that make money and divisions that don't generate any revenue but are critical to the operations of the company. You have in a business like, oh, I don't know, a bank, for example, the money comes in on the loans, the branches are actually loss leaders because they have deposits that pay interest, they're losing money on the branches, deposits, employee costs. The HR divisions of almost every single company don't generate any revenue. They all have critical functions, though, that are necessary in order for the company to stay solvent and accomplish its mission. Government is no different. Government is no different. We have revenues coming in from taxes, we have revenue taxes responsible for collecting it, we have certain enforcement divisions that bring in other fees, we have grant writers that bring in grants, we have the revenue generating side of the house. We also have the side of the house that doesn't generate any revenue. But as one big unit, we're supposed to be able to function solvently. We're supposed to be able to accomplish the missions of each of our individual divisions, some of them responsible for bringing in the money, others responsible for educating our people, keeping our community safe, providing health care for our people. No different from the lending department bringing in the revenue to make sure that the branches are funded, the HR division is funded. It really is the same. And so what we need to do is understand that the analogy of a business giving raises to its management when it's not fully funding its divisions and when it has a going concern in its junior company is exactly what is going on right now in our government. And that is why repealing these raises is important from a symbolic perspective. Yes, it's $2 million more that we'll be able to reallocate, but more importantly, it will communicate to our shareholders, the people of Guan, who vote in this Board of Directors, this Guan Legislature, and who vote in this CEO, our governor, it will communicate to all of them that we understand what our priorities are and that we aren't going to be making the pockets of the management more important than the operations of the division or more important than resolving the going concern of the Guan Memorial Hospital. And that's just, those are just the surface issues. We have road problems, we have school issues, so many issues. But I use these analogies and I make this case because the numbers have validated the And there have been certain actions by members of this body that have encouraged me to believe that perhaps we are going to put the people first when it comes to something like this, and that we are going to be able to actually override this veto. So I make this case in light of the circumstances financially, in light of the recent actions that have, for all intents and purposes, indicated a desire to make good of the people. I ask my colleagues, let's do this now. There really is no valid reason why we should not. All of the original justifications for it have proven to be inaccurate. The symbolic gesture is necessary, and the financial realities are there. So I ask my colleagues to please... So I ask my colleagues to please support the override of vetoed Bill 204-33. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, does anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Being that there is no one who would like to speak, do you want another opportunity to close? No, so on the motion then to send, notwithstanding the objections of the governor on vetoed Bill Number 204, through the voting file, there being no objection, so ordered. The legislature is going to take a brief recess.
Second session. We are in the voting file on Bill Number 297-33COR. The clerks, please read the bill.
Bill Number 297-33COR, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to add a new section 3107.1 to Article 1 of Chapter 3, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to mandating the promulgation of a fee schedule for services provided to clients of the family planning program, and to establishing an interim fee schedule by authorizing and adopting the fee schedule of the regional community health centers.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 297-33 received 15 ye votes. Bill Number 297 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 333-33COR.
Bill Number 333-33COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., TC Ada, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., Judith T. Wampat EDD, an act to add a new section 3101.4 to Article 1 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 57100 of Chapter 57, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the voluntary replacement of a distinguishing mark for Guam veterans on Guam driver's license and Guam identification cards, and to require that quarterly reports be transmitted to Imaga Lahin Guahan and the Speaker of Ilasla Turan Guahan of the same.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 333-33 received 15 ye votes. Bill Number 333 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 322-33COR.
Bill Number 322-33COR, as amended by the sponsor and further amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada, Judith T. Wampat EDD, RJ Respecho, an act to rezone lots 2260 and 2261, municipality of Baragada, from agricultural zone A to school zone S1.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill Number 322-33 received 15 ye votes. Bill Number 322 is duly passed by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan, shall substitute, vetoed, substitute bill two be overwritten? Roll call. I'm sorry? No, roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Lahin Guahan, the votes to override is 11 ye votes, four nay votes. Vetoked bill, substitute bill Number 2-33 is overwritten by this body. Notwithstanding the objections of Imaga Lahin Guahan, shall Bill 204 be overwritten? Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. On the matter of vetoed Bill 204, and notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Lahin Guahan, the votes are nine yays, six nays. Vetoked Bill Number 204 failed to get the required vote to be overwritten. On the nomination of Alberto A. Lamarena V. to serve as the Director of the Department of Corrections. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. On the nomination of Alberto A. Lamarena V. to serve as the Director of the Department of Corrections, received 15 ye votes. Mr. Alberto Lamarena V. is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Maria D. R. Titanow to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Or left. Ms. Maria D. R. Titanow received unanimous support, and she is duly confirmed by this body. Senator Respecho, a motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we adjourn. This session is subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, hearing no objection, this legislature is adjourned, subject to the call of the Speaker.